Thank you.
Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas. Ms. Krishnawski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Sir.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Nine of eleven present.
All right, thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2022 capital fund for Luzerne County for the Sheriff's Department. Anybody for public comment? We have no slips.
Public comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. The... The ordinance would need to be amended. What we were looking to do was move the money that was in the 2023 budget into 2024. But we have a lower amount. The amount that was proposed is a portion of that $58,124.01, which is the balance of the amount that's due for the tasers. So, the actual amount that should be transferred is the $205,310.10 and the $58,124.01, which would give a total that was left over for '23 to move to '24 of $263,524.10.
Okay, we can make that amendment at the time of the...
I just wanted to make...
Yeah, at the time of the...
In case anybody was going to talk about it in public, I wanted to make sure
Okay.
it was out there.
Yeah, we can make that amendment. Just remind us of the numbers when we... Okay? Anybody for public comment?
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, well, hold on a second. There is a...
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Raybo, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo calling in from the newly minted Stanley Cup champion Florida Panthers, submitting his public comment today to you
Go ahead.
for the sheriffs, you know, for the amended for the sheriffs on the capital plan. I have one question. I do believe I asked this when the DA made his annual report with respect to the opioid monies. Will... Can this be... Can the opioid money be used to subsidize for the tasers as well as this money? Or can it be... Does it have to be from this specific item from DCED? I'm just curious because I do believe the opioid money would cover for taser... For the tasers for the Sheriff's Department as well as for corrections or for the DA or, you know, like for the county detectives. So, I'm just curious as to know if the opioid money would be utilized to cover for this expense, if this is going to be returned... The money's going to be returned. Or, excuse me, or if it's going to not be used for the sheriffs and it's, you know, there's going to be other monies involved. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Skeen.
Yeah, these funds were already approved by council when it was on the capital budget in 2023, and that was before the commission was opened. I don't believe that those funds could be used for tasers for the Sheriff's Department anyway.
I don't think so either.
But this was already funds that were approved in 2023, and we're just moving it from '23 to '24 so it could be spent.
Okay. All right, thank you, Attorney Skeen. Anybody else? All right, motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meetings adjourned. We will go into our next public hearing. And we've already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krishnawski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Sir.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Nine of eleven.
All right, thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 general fund budget for Luzerne County for E-RAP. Any public comment? Anybody in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Uh, I think that's... His hand is still up from before. Mr. Raybo, you don't have another public comment for this, do you? Oh, okay, his hand's down. All right. And it's back up. Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Second public hearing is adjourned. We have one more. We already had Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krishnawski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Nine of eleven.
All right, thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance for general fund budget for Luzerne County for DCED. Any public comment?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo speaking again.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to this item for the money that... Am I correct in that this money will be being returned back to DCED, to the state? Is this what the premise is of this ordinance?
Uh, Manager Crokma? Right.
Okay, because I'm just curious because I thought that outstanding monies that can be used for this expense, that it could be utilized within the parameters of that program. So, if the manager or the adminis... You know, the other minister... The division heads have a use for that money, that could be... That could fall within the parameters of that program, it could still be utilized. So, I was wondering if the county manager and the other division heads would have a use for that money that falls within the guidelines of that program and the parameters and the budget.
Right. If you read through the agenda submittal, it does mention that, what exactly it is for, that there was a balance at the end of the year that was more than they anticipated carryover. So, they're just editing the lines.
So, the reason I ask is because, as you know, the state is on the heels of passing the budget, the state budget for 2024, 2025. So, my suggestion to you and the council and the manager would be to see if that money could be utilized, I guess, for if you ask our state delegation to be utilized for the court staff reimbursements as they are obligated... The state is obligated to increase the reimbursements to the county as they increased the COLA, you know, the cost of living increase expense in 2021 by the largest increase in 30 years. So, I would just remind you, Mr. Chair, and the council and the manager that that needs to be explicitly made clear to the state that the 3.6% increase can't be carried over indefinitely by the county taxpayers when it is clearly a state responsibility and obligation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Oh, Manager Crokma, your mic's not on. He probably can't... Oh, it's not? Oh, well, never mind.
The money's going to Shikshini Borough, and the money has already been spent.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Well, look at that. It's 6:01 PM. I'd like to call this voting session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krishnawski? Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Present.
Nine of eleven.
All right, thank you. Before we move on, Attorney Skeen, would you please announce the executive session?
Yes. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session to discuss litigation matters relating to employment and election law.
Okay. All right, are there any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
Mr. Chair, let the record show, Ms. Smith has joined the meeting.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions from voting session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda's adopted. We'll now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. Is there anybody in the audience for public comment? On voting session items only. We don't have any slips, right? No? Okay. Anybody on the Zoom?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo, Hazleton speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to the item on the match for Hazleton Public Transit, I just have, you know, just for future reference, that the council and the manager should ask for a copy of the Hazleton Transit budget each... For each year, even though it should be posted on the city's website as it is the division of the city government, I think it would behoove the council just to make a clear assertion of seeing how much Hazleton City will be matching as far as, you know, putting into, you know, for the operations of the Hazleton Transit, just for future reference. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2024 voting session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Number one, we'll have a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 capital plan for the Luzerne County Sheriff. Please remember the amendment that we'll have to make.
Motion.
Motion? All right, and someone would... Somebody... Someone be willing to make the amendment?
I will.
Okay. Mr. Sabatino? And do you have the specific language, Attorney Skeen?
Yes, we'd be making an amendment to... We would amend the ordinance from the amount written on there at $58,124.01 to the amount that was left over in the 2023 budget, which is $263,524.10.
I'll second that motion.
Second? All right, roll call? On the amendment, this is.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Now, we'll have the approval of the ordinance itself. There's a motion and a second already. Roll call? This is with the amendment on it.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number two, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 general fund budget for Luzerne County for E-RAP.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thornton and Mr. Wilovich? On the question? Roll call?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Number three, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 general fund budget for Luzerne County for DCED facilities closure grant.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Attorney Skeen did mention that he may have another amendment on this. So, does somebody want to make a motion for a possible amendment that... Mr. Thornton?
Yes, this has a 15-day effective period written in the ordinance. It would normally have to be a five-day in case the county manager has an objection to it. I don't believe she does here.
I do not.
She does not. And what we're looking to do is this would... We need to have the money spent and used by the end of this month. So, the month will end before 15 days is up. So, we want to be able to move forward right away so the monies can be used.
So, the amendment is...
Okay.
Change it from 15 days to five days?
Or...
To immediate.
Effective immediately upon signing?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll maintain the second motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second for the amendment that will make the ordinance effective immediately upon signing. Roll call?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. And then we'll have a motion to adopt the ordinance. There's a first and a second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski? Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving modifications to American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded projects.
So moved. On a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
I just have one general question. This motion, after reading through the projects, was to extend the timeframe for each entity that's receiving on this particular motion, receiving monies from the county for ARPA. I just have a general question. I don't know. Could be directed either to Ms. Sparage or county manager. My ongoing concern with extensions of time, because my concerns are based on the strict timeline given to us by the federal government, not just to earmark this money by the end of this year, which is six months away, but also the projects have to be completed by the end of '26, which is two and a half years from now. So, my ongoing concern is always, are there any projects out there that the administration here views right now that could be in jeopardy of starting or completing the projects on time? And if there are any such projects, would those names of those entities come before council in a timely manner so that we could quickly move and re-earmark that money so that we don't have to hand it back to the federal government?
I don't... Michelle Sparage is having difficulty logging on, but I'll give you a...
I'm on.
Okay.
Sorry.
Michelle, do you want to answer those questions, or do you want me to cover them? I'm fine either way.
I didn't hear... I didn't hear all of them because I was just getting in, but I believe Mr. Thornton was concerned about the timeline of some projects.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Granting the extensions, and we gave an early deadline to our subrecipients so that we could be...
Yes, we did.
We could be ahead of the game, so we would know where they are within the projects. So, that's... They have until the end of this year, actually, and we gave them an earlier date, just so that we could keep a better handle on what's going on, because there are an enormous amount of projects that we have to cover. The Councilman Thornton asked, are there projects that we believe may not be finished by 2026?
Not at this time. Booth has been doing follow-up phone calls, meetings, and it's progressing. If there are ones that Booth is concerned about, they will reach out and do some more additional follow-up.
And Booth will be here next week doing some onsite visits.
This week.
Oh, this week.
This Friday.
That's right, this week.
Yeah.
They'll be here this week to do some onsite visits. But if there are projects that may not be able to be completed by 2026, are there any other issues?
Thank you for that. I guess my other big concern is anything that happens in 2025, which is only six months and beyond, if something happens at that point or later, we're very handcuffed or limited as to what we could do with that money. Isn't that true? That's why I'm so concerned about the next six months.
Right. It would have to be whatever category that funding was awarded to, it would have to be spent in that same category.
It's the category, it's not necessarily the project.
Correct.
So, if the monies somehow get returned to us because a project can't be completed before 2026, or maybe they don't need the funds to complete the project, that those monies can be used in a category, in the same category, not necessarily the same project.
Okay, thank you.
And doing a training session for council, I believe Friday?
This Friday at 2 o'clock.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Sabatino.
Ms. Sparage, would we be able to get a list of all the projects and what categories they're in? Would you be able to email that to us, just so we could be...
I can put that information together. I may have to confirm with Booth, but I believe she just sent me a link this week. I'm not sure what was in it, but I will certainly look for that and get that together.
Thank you.
There are a number of questions that were posed to the administration by council, and we will be formulating responses to those questions, and we'll include that list of categories as well.
All right. And also, just one other thing, just to dovetail on that slightly, because we have received a number of additional requests for ARPA funding, being that we have some left. Council is not actively seeking out additional requests for ARPA funding right now. So, when an entity or an organization sends us a letter of interest, they aren't filling out an application, they aren't doing anything official, and council really, I mean, we may see them, but we don't really necessarily need to or have any intention of taking action when we do see that they are sending these requests. And so, just so the public's aware, you know, you may have heard in the newspaper that there is a bunch of requests out there, but council hasn't actively been seeking any of that out. It just... They're coming to us because they know we have extra money. Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that. Yeah, and I have since learned some things since two weeks ago we were here, or 12 days ago, whatever it was. But it's my understanding that a lot of... Well, several letters have been received, letters of interest for additional monies. But we haven't... We're not sitting on any applications seeking additional money at this point. It's my understanding, except for one application.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And I think that application was received last December, over six months ago, and that application was the Luzerne County Fair for the disaster they suffered. But we don't have... We're not sitting on other applications like some people thought the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have a first and a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving modifications to American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded projects for Hazleton City Land Bank and Maternal Health and Family Services Incorporated.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? Roll call?
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Whiskers World Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution committing a local match for state operating assistance to the Hazleton Public Transit.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on a second. Motion by Mr. Sabatino, second by Ms. Stevenson.
On the question.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Okay, on this motion, as many of you might recall, the past couple of years, I voiced a lot of concerns about this motion. But my concerns are not steeped in the fact that I don't want to send the matching funds to the Hazleton Public Transit, because they're looking at receiving a grant of over $2 million from the state, and they need this 200 and some thousand from the county in order to match that grant, or they don't get it, which would be a devastating financial blow to the Hazleton Public Transit and their bus services. So, by all means, I'm behind, and I support this measure. My concerns remain, though, and I'm going to say this again, that the Hazleton Public Transit system graciously supplies bus services to Carbon County and Schoolkill County, and they transport residents of Carbon County and Schoolkill County back and forth to Hazleton and the area and back home. At the end of the day, mostly people that work, don't have means to drive or can't drive for whatever reason. So, my problem with this is that Carbon County and Schoolkill County continues to receive bus services from Hazleton, and we're helping fund that. Therefore, Luzerne County residents are helping fund this Hazleton Transit system, and Carbon County and Schoolkill County residents are not. And the commissioners of those counties, I'm asking them again here in public, and every year, Hazleton Transit sends those county commissioners letters asking for a minimal, small matching amount. I mean, $5,000 or $10,000 would be a step in the right direction. And every year, those letters, I understand, letters, I understand, are not met with yes or no. There's just no reply. I understand their silence. And I, I just, that's my problem with this measure, in that, you know, Luzerne County residents, as we should, and this county council should support bus services for county residents, but we're also supporting bus services for other counties' residents without them putting any skin in the game. And if I think I'm correct, because that's how it's been explained to me by the officials at the Hazelton Public Transit. So that, I just want to make that clear. That was my only opposition the past couple of years. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I, hi. Mr. Thornton, I agree with your concerns and wish that those counties would obviously participate. However, do you know how many stops, does anyone know how many stops go into the other counties?
We had a ridership report presented to us last year. It was pretty extensive. One county, I think Carbon, has minimal, but Schoolkill, I think, has a lot more.
And do we know the percentages of people?
Yeah, they broke it down, percentages of ridership miles and per passenger and all that last year. So it is something. It's just that there's zero contribution.
Right, and, and that's a thorn in, in one side, I understand. But I think what's most important is that Hazelton is getting these services, and that Hazelton residents who may be working in, in the other counties are also getting these services. So while I understand your point, maybe, perhaps, instead of sending letters, we should reach out personally to the commissioners of those counties and see if we can get some help on that. But I certainly think that this is needed now. But in the future, maybe we'll reach out personally. Thank you.
Ms. Stevenson?
I'd like to contribute to what Joanna said. I absolutely agree with you, Mr. Thornton. Those other counties should definitely be participating, and I definitely agree with Ms. Smith, that we should take, take the next step and contact them ourselves. I wouldn't mind showing up in Schoolkill County. They're going to have to say it to my face, but I think they should contribute. And if they're not reaching out, they're not contacting Hazelton and they're hearing nothing back, then maybe one of us needs to step up to the plate and see how many dollars we can get from them, because they are not contributing to their constituents in those areas at all, for years.
I'd be happy to make that trip with you, Ms. Stevenson. I agree.
Sounds good.
All right. Mr. Sabatino?
I'll go one.
I agree with all of you, and we should go visit them. But I would like to point out, as a small business owner, in downtown Hazelton, a lot of people from Beaver Meadows and McAdoo, where there are, there is no supermarket in Beaver Meadows, there is no bank in Beaver Meadows, there's nothing but homes in Beaver Meadows right now. A lot of those people are coming to our county and contributing to our economy.
Economy.
So we might have to pick up the slack until we go have this face-to-face meeting. So I think multiple things can be true at once, like, this is something that's needed, and we need to take the next step. So just keep that, everybody should keep that in mind. I know Mr. Haas is usually the bigger proponent of not giving the full match, and he's not here tonight, but I wanted to put it on the record, that there are a lot of, a lot of people who contribute to the Luzerne County economy in the southern end of the county that come from those communities that we service.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number eight, motion to adopt the resolution depositing $280,000, $280,507 into the reserve fund.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. The second was, um...
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah, Ms. McDermott. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number nine, motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member as a county commissioner's association of Pennsylvania voting delegate. I apologize, I just had the list pulled up on my phone, and I lost it, so give me one second, just so I can repeat who the five members are that are currently on. Hold on one second here. Okay. The current members are Mr. Thornton, Mr. Wilovich, Mr. Perry, Mr. Sabatino, and Mr. Haas. And, Mr. Thornton, I think you said you didn't want to serve?
Yeah, I just can't put the time into it, no.
Okay.
So I'd, I'd like to be removed from the list.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to open nominations? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open. It's, it's in five different resolutions, so we'll just have to do it all. I apologize, it's going to take a couple seconds. All right, is there a nomination? All right. All right. All right. Ms. Smith, any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. All right, we only have one, so we'll have a motion to nominate Ms. Smith as a voting delegate.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 10, motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member as a county commissioner's association of Pennsylvania voting delegate.
Motion to open nominations.
Motion in a second. The second was Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Wilovich.
Second.
All right. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. We have Mr. Wilovich, resolution.
I make a motion to pass that resolution, Mr. Wilovich.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 11, we have another motion to adopt the resolution for a C-CAP voting delegate. Motion. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
I motion to nominate LeAnn McDermott.
All right.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. We'll have the resolution for Ms. McDermott.
I make that motion.
Motion, second. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 12, another motion to adopt the resolution for a C-CAP voting delegate member.
Move to open nominations.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
Motion to nominate Mr. Sabatino.
A second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. We'll have the resolution.
I move to nominate Mr. Sabatino with the resolution.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 13, final one, motion to adopt the resolution appointing a C-CAP voting delegate member.
Motion. Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
I nominate, I'd like to nominate Mr. Harry Haas.
Is there a second? All right. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Stevenson.
Okay.
Second.
All right. There's a nomination in a se... Let me just, hold on one second here, because I do have that pulled up. And, okay, yeah, all right. I just wanted to make sure, because there's delegates that aren't voting delegates that are on there as well, and I didn't know if Mr. Haas was one or not.
Oh.
Okay, so there's a nomination for Ms. Stevenson and Mr. Haas. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. All right, we have two, so we're going to go around the room, and everyone state your preference.
Mr. Sabatino?
Stevenson.
Ms. Smith?
Stevenson.
Ms. Stevenson?
Stevenson.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Haas.
Mr. Wilovich?
Ms. Stevenson.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Stevenson.
Mr. LaScavage?
Stevenson.
Ms. McDermott?
Stevenson.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Uh, Mr. Haas.
We have seven for Ms. Stevenson and three for Mr. Haas.
Okay. All right, we will have a resolution for Ms. Stevenson?
I make the motion for Ms. Stevenson.
Motion in a second.
That was Patty.
I'm sorry, yeah, I, I know. Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 14, to allow Christopher J. Bellman to advertise county-owned property for sale.
So moved. Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. On the question, roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 15, motion to allow Martin Carr to advertise county-owned property for sale. Motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 16, motion to allow Dustin M. Schweitzer to advertise county-owned property for sale.
Motion.
Motion in a second. On the question, roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 17, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement of sale, et cetera, for a parcel of county-owned property located in Dallas Township to John R. Mould III.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. On the question, roll call.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Thank you. We'll now have public comment. This can be on non-agenda items. Is there anybody for public comment in the audience? Mr. Grantied? Is the mic on?
Joe Grantied, Plains Township.
There we go.
It's more like an agenda item, but you've got this ARPA money. I'm wondering if any of these pools, swimming pools for the kids in this county that have been closing down have reached out for any money to help them to, you know, keep these pools open, or, or is it something that we could reach up to them, that you could reach out to them, say, "We have money if you want to open a pool"? Because these kids should have a place to go.
We haven't had any requests for swimming pools or anything like that from municipalities. That wasn't on our original list, and we haven't had any additional requests yet. And I think our focus now is mostly going to be on trying to get some internal projects done, so we can alleviate any burden on the taxpayers when the budget comes this year.
Well, it seems like that you're reaching, or you're, you're trying to find more projects, and I'm, I'm pointing out that there are projects that, you know, are not business-related but are healthy for this county. And Kingston just closed their pool down. It wouldn't take much to open it back up. I don't know why they're not here, but... The other thing is with that bus in Hazelton, is, is that a pay-per-writer bus, or is that a free service? Or who benefits from that? I'm just, I'm just wondering if, you know, that's something you can go to the businesses that they're supplying workers for, and maybe have them, you know, work to relieve the, the county's debt on that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grantied. Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, just for, edification of everybody here, I believe that the county, we cannot reach out to certain entities and ask them to apply for more ARPA funding, or, first time, we would have to open the pool up to, to not show prejudice or bias. We'd have to open it up to everybody in the county at the same time, and we're told by booth management, who's managing the whole project for us, that there's just not enough time to do that. So that's why so far, we, we haven't been accepting applications. We have no applications. We had letters of interest, but we'd have to open it up to everybody. It's a great cause. I agree with you, the community pool's a great recreational cause, but that's, that's where we stand right now. We do have also internal county, we're not looking for internal projects to do. We have more than enough. We have plenty of projects which would consume all the remaining funding. So that's what we're looking at right now to prioritize those. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, on the Hazelton Public Transit, if Mr. Chair, you and Vice Chair, remember, and members of council that have been around for a while, remember, that I brought up last year and the year before, that Can Do, the Can Do Corporation benefits from the ridership of Hazelton Public Transit, going to their facilities in Humboldt and Belmont Industrial Parks. And if you remember, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Vice Chair, and members of council that were around, you'd also remember that they were supposed to respond, Can Do, for the letters that you sent, along with the state delegation sent along with the state delegation in that area. Now, there is a new state senator that represents the Hazelton area who is a lot more closer to those officials in Skooko and Carbon County. Maybe you might want to reach out to Senator Argle, and Representative Dane Watrow, and Representative Doyle Heffley of Carbon County. They would be better suited to accommodate or facilitate any kind of meetings that you may have with your counterparts in those respective counties. Also, my comment in terms of the Government Study Commission, Mr. Chair, I know that you and the council and the manager don't have anything to do with it, but I would make the request for the Office of Law to please reach out to the Study Commission and remind them that they must follow the Sunshine Law and Home Rule Law respectively, because it is, it is very troubling and concerning to me that they are not following the process under those specific laws, under the Sunshine Law and the Home Rule Optional Plans Law, because they're running it like it's a council meeting. It's not a county council meeting. A Government Study Commission is akin to a local constitutional convention. So I don't know what the previous county council chair and current government council, Government Study Commission Chair is thinking, but I would hope that he could, you know, get with the program and read the Home Rule Law Book, the Home Rule Handbook put out by the state. And by the way, one of the Study Commission members, Mr. Ritzick, served in DCED under the Local Government Services Agency. He should know better. So I don't know why they're not, you know... And by the way, that Home Rule Manual put out by the state is $17. So, Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion that when you allocate the budget for the Study Commission, please get the copies of the Home Rule Guidebook put out by the state, and it is an eligible expense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Lewis?
Hi. Yes, hi. Darrell Lewis, on behalf of the Wokesbury Area Community Garden. Just want to say that with regard to the ARPA grant and the budget extensions, we will be benefiting from that extension. It's going to give us the opportunity and the ability to grow significantly more food in the community garden in the upcoming years, which we give out freely to anyone and anyone who has that need for it. So again, thank you for enabling us to continue to provide this service for the community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I love the community gardens. We have a couple of them, and they're awesome. Anybody else? Public comment?
I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
6:00, City View Park, Rockin' the Mountain. The first concert in Hazelton was just a great night. We had over 1,000 people, and everybody had a good time. There were kids there dancing and families. It was just a wonderful evening. We have another concert on Friday. Hope to see you there.
It was fantastic. I was there. It was, it was an amazing time, and I'm glad that we... I really give a lot of credit to the people that were involved in, in making that a possibility. Part of it came out from the Visitors Bureau, and Manager Crocomo was the one that came up with this idea, so she definitely deserves the credit on that one, so...
I like to dance. If you can't make that Friday, it's a Friday after, too. And then, then we'll be up here in Wokesbury.
Who's performing this week?
It's a tribute to Fleetwood Mac.
Go ahead. Mr. Thornton, you have a question?
Stephen, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to publicly recognize and commend Katrina Gauntly, and Leslie and Jillian, and the people she works with. Today, I attended, this afternoon, graduation ceremony for our foster youth that are in our program, and we have outside contractors that assist us in that effort. And these are, there was 12 young people just graduated high school from various high schools around the county who have been through the programs and have probably met with more adversity in their young lives than anybody here cares to know. But it was quite a ceremony, a celebration. It was held at Newberry Estates. They recognized each individual, talked about each one, and it was a nice turnout, and it was a wonderful event. I'd just like to thank Katrina and her colleagues for the help. And she would say, well, it was a lot of others, and it was. I just don't have the list handy in front of me. But just want the public to know that we continue to strive to help people like this that need that help, and it was a wonderful event today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Anybody else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. It's 6:42. We'll start back up at 6:55.
6:56, I'd like to call the, what is with that echo? Oh, okay. Can we lower that volume, please? Because it's going to distract me quite a bit, listening to my beautiful voice echoing. All right. Yeah. It has to be played just on muted when the time is appropriate. Okay. All right. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call?
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krasinski? Mr. Liscavage? Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
10 of 11?
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Number six? Okay. There's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number six is deleted.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we move, because the people are here in the room, we move item number five, discussion of the opioid commission. Could we move that to item number one, please?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then Sharon, did we have to remove this as well? Or no?
No, it's the same thing as this. They're just combined now.
Okay. All right. So note that number two and three are actually combined. So just, I mean, we'll just skip over, you know, number three, and number four will turn into number three, and so on. But we've moved quite a bit of stuff around already, so it's pretty confusing as it is. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted? Okay. We will have the discussion regarding the opioid commission ad campaign. Manager Crocomo, do you want to introduce the individuals?
As everyone is aware, the county received settlement from the opioid litigation. To date, we have received, in 2022, we received $1,42,345.75. We, that money's, the only amount that has been spent is for the MAP program at the prison. Based on the rules of the settlement agreement, we submit reports to the trust. The trust indicated to us that by September, we have to expend that amount of money, that over $1 million we have to expend, or else we have to return it. We also have to expend over $1 million by December. The committee that has just been formed met, and Ryan Hogan, who is the Director of Drug and Alcohol, along with our Mental Health Department, and I believe Aging, has a relationship with WBRE to do public service announcements for our organizations. So Ryan Hogan suggested that we initiate our opioid program with a public television, public service announcements. And we had WBRE do a presentation for us, and they will be doing that presentation for council. And it's recommended that we engage WBRE to do this service. We'll go through the highlights of the presentation, but there are some things that I want you to keep in mind when you're watching. Part of the target audience are our youth. We were informed that years ago, the average age for experiments with drugs was 13. I believe it's 10 years old now. So part of our campaign will target young adults, and they will be hearing from young adults. And they'll go through the particulars of the program, but I want council to keep in mind that we have to obligate this money, over $1 million, by September. And we believe that this will reach a vast audience, especially our young children, who are really the targets of these opioids. So I am going to turn it over to our WBRE representatives for the demonstration.
Eric O, that's green.
Is your computer muted? There we go. I think we're muted. Okay. Perfect. I'm the general manager. You would think we would know more about how to operate electronic equipment. We are really good at it in our own house, but anyway, I wanted to let you all know that WBRE and WYRU are very committed... know that WBRE and WYRU are very committed to addressing the critical issue of opioids in our community. And opioids are linked to many horrible things: crime, broken homes, poor health, poverty, um, tragic deaths, and they're the biggest threat facing our children today. This matters tremendously to our team at WBRE because our station is located here. Most of our employees live in Luzerne County. Uh, it's, it's a very important thing to, to many, many of our people there. So, our entire TV station is behind putting a great effort towards stamping this thing out. Uh, the partnership we've created, we'll get into homes, schools, mobile phones, and educate and inform people of all ages all over Luzerne County. Some of the messages are highly targeted using digital platforms into places where, where young people congregate these days, uh, and you'll see some of that with what Megan's gonna show you here. Our TV stations are, uh, part of Next Star Media Group, which is a pretty big company. We own 200 TV stations nationwide. We own the CW Network and the News Nation TV Network. And we can deliver messages on all kinds of platforms that you might not even think of: TikTok and Facebook and Reddit and Snapchat and all kinds of places. Also customized, uh, uh, streaming services that have ad support. Uh, we can get the messages in there. So it's not only our, our news and our website, it's a lot of other places to surround the community with these messages. Um, on, on point here is Megan Mance. Megan has worked with our TV station 18 years. She's one of the greatest, uh, uh, account managers in all of Northeast Pennsylvania and has proven herself to be quite, quite good at doing this stuff. And I'm gonna hand it over to her to describe a little bit more specifically what we've done. This will be a little bit shorter than what we, uh, presented the other day, but I think you'll get the picture of what we're talking about. And I do think, uh, in the, I believe that the full agenda, the full package was put together and presented to you guys to review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Is it?
No, no. Oh, are you gonna?
Unmute.
Unmute.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just waiting for it to come on screen.
Just wanna, uh, when you do run the video, I guess, just turn, turn that mic off.
This mic off? Okay. Okay. I could do that. I do have an HDMI cord that I brought. Would that be helpful? No? Okay. It's on the Zoom, but it's not on the... Yeah.
We're gonna watch a TikTok video on how to do this.
Two years ago, we let up her brother's birthday. It's her birthday. Yeah, my mom, but I have time, sure. They were with their tribute two weeks earlier.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Other than plugging it right into the monitor.
The only thing that was powerful was the video.
Yeah, all my notes, my notes were in there. So I guess I'll just have to pull it, pull it up.
You can do it, rehearse it. You own it. You own it. Just don't read it. Summarize, you know what's on each one of those slides. It'll be fun. Did you print a hard copy? Next time, print a hard copy with your notes pages.
Could you email the presentation to us? And then we'll see if we can do it internally?
Yes. Yes, I could do that.
Edward dot James.
Edward dot James?
All right, we're gonna, um, while we're trying to figure out the technical difficulties, we're gonna go over to some other items. Just as soon as you are all ready, IT, let us know and we'll just go right back to the, uh, we'll go right back to the presentation. All right. Sorry, I can't take credit for it. No. No, no, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just... No, let's not belabor this. All right, uh, we'll move on to receive and discuss division, or, I'm sorry, budget reports for 2024 May.
Okay, now it's on, right? Okay, so we're going to talk about the first, um, the budget reports for the month of May. The first report that you have is the revenue report. Our revenue earned is at 71% of budget, or $117 million. Tax collections are at 86%, um, $106.9 million, which right now are about $2 million higher than at the same time last year. So, tax collections are going well. Our expenses are at $46,798, which is only 29% of our budget, which is favorable, um, given that we're at the end of May and we're already five months into the year. So, all of our expenses are obviously not evenly spaced throughout the 12 months, but, but we're in a good position. Next is the listing of the budget transfers, followed by the accounts payable report, which is running at about 29%, $46,798 through May, which is slightly lower than last year. The treasurer's report shows a healthy cash balance of $218,83,000 at the end of May. The cash balance at the end of April was $192 million. So, um, we've, you know, the increased cash is mostly due to the tax collections, again, through May, combined with our interest revenue that we've been receiving and our low trending expense payments. Our interest earned for the month of May is $465,000. Of that, the ARPA accounts, um, amount to $276 million, $276,000. Um, and year-to-date total interest earned is $2,414,000. Our ARPA cash balance, um, holding is $62.2 million. Our ARPA interest earned year-to-date, 1.4. And our total ARPA interest earned in total, since, you know, we've started receiving the funds, is at $5.94 million. Baker Tilly's working on finalizing our 2023 audit. They've committed to having the report to us on Thursday, so two more days, and we should have the, the final report. Um, the RFP for the 2024 audit, which is going to be a one-year, um, contract with three renewal options, was published on the county website yesterday. It should be in the Citizens Voice tomorrow and then again on Friday. So, does anyone have any questions for me on their reports or anything about what's going on in budget and finance?
Any questions? Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, very quick, Mr. Rozell, um, as, on the budget finance audit committee myself, do you anticipate, or have you heard of any issues or problems with drafts or anything like, or is everything on schedule for them?
They keep telling us everything is on schedule. So, we've met with them every week for the past several months. You know, we met with them last Wednesday again, and they committed to having the report to us by Thursday, so that's where we are. We gave them the final, um, believe it or not, um, the agencies were done with their final reports, um, earlier, obviously a lot earlier than last year. We were on them, we had all of those last week. We got the final one today from, um, Domestic Relations. There was a, a holdup there, but not due to, um, to anything that Domestic Relations did. There was a, the auditor had a death in her family and it prolonged the, the receipt of the audit. But we did get it today, so everything should be fine.
Hey, thank, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Rozell. All right, we'll move on to, uh, the discussion regarding the ratific, ratifying the original agreement, um, for the tasers. Manager Krokomo?
Uh, we have, uh, Jim Wilbur here, uh, to discuss the particulars. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, Mr. Wilbur was tired, uh, and, uh, during a time period where there really wasn't any discussions with him as to procedures, uh, and, uh, he entered into a five-year contract with Axon Enterprise. So, we need to ratify, council needs to ratify that contract because, because it was never brought before council. So, you need to ratify that contract. But the good news is, there's going to be an amendment to that contract, which saves us money. Jim?
All right.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So, I am here basically to answer those questions, um, as the manager so eloquently stated there. Uh, it was noted that, uh, we initially entered into this contract as soon as I basically was appointed, as the warden, my training department came to me, talking about the, the, the need of, of the tasers in the facility. So, it is something that we've known for a while, so we went ahead and, um, got involved with that. Again, um, they contacted us about a month and a half ago, Axon Enterprises did, to let us know that over the total five-year, uh, contract with the, the new contract that they sent, it would be a savings of $5,012.79. And, um, we've already, through our safety and supply budget, is where we budgeted at in 2023, 2024. So, out of that monies, the monies there of the $74,596, we have, in, with the, the remaining balance, we'll be $46,443.76, which again, will remain budgeted in our safety and supply budget. Any questions?
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, just wondering, um, was this, uh, item bid out, or was it not necessary to bid it out? Maybe you don't know, I don't know.
It's more of a sole source. There's, these types of tasers, the, the capability, it was, it was Axon. Axon, and, uh, the sheriff's use a different one, we use an Axon 7, uh, which has a capability of what's called a drive stun. And drive stun is very effective in, um, close quarters, because that's what we deal with, is close quarters. So, one of the biggest advantages of the Axon Taser 7 is, not all staff carry it, we have our, our line supervisors that carry it and our transport teams, because anytime you're outside of the facility, there's always a risk. We have a lot of hospital duties out right now, um, you know, more than I've ever seen. And so now each transport team is armed with that. So, if in the event, something happened inside of a hospital, instead of having to resort to some kind of force, i.e. deadly force, they're able to use something else. The problem is, the other, the other tool that they have is the oleoresin capsicum spray, and that's not something that, I can point it at you, but everybody else in the room's gonna be affected. With this, that's not the case. And what we've seen throughout this last year is the, just the show of force, just is a deterrent, because these inmates know what they are, because they've seen them when they've been out, outside of the jail. So, they recognize that that is not something they want to get involved in. And so, that's, that's, so I say that, but I believe it is a sole source. That was my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilbur.
Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, next up, we'll have the discussion regarding the Makonaqua-Shikshini Bridge Art Project.
This is, uh, something that I'm, I'm very excited to share with council. We were approached, uh, by Jacob, who I hope is, uh, on the, uh, Zoom. Uh, he's a resident of Maryland, uh, but his grandmother owns a home and, owned a home in Shikshini, and he bought a home in Shikshini. Uh, and during his time, when he came to visit, uh, he befriended Ed Steber, who, uh, if you go across the Makonaqua-Shikshini Bridge, which is a county bridge, uh, it has a walkway. And Edward, uh, was a photographer, and Edward took pictures of the area. And the area is breathtakingly beautiful. And, uh, Jacob, uh, is assembling, uh, a group of artists that will do renderings on the walkway of Edward's photographs. I, uh, met, uh, Jacob, along with, uh, Attorney Skeen. We met on a beautiful Saturday morning, um, and I can tell you, uh, I could've spent the whole day there, talking to him and residents who live in Makonaqua, who, uh, were crossing, uh, the bridge at the time. We have a county that has these quiet beauties that aren't hidden, because we drive past them and we see them, but they're exquisite. And, um, it took somebody from Maryland, uh, to get that, get me to give it that attention. Uh, and, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Jacob, because Jacob is passionate about this, and, uh, there is already one rendering on one block, uh, and I, I really encourage everyone, um, to go to see the, that rendering right now, because it is, uh, beautiful. Jacob, are you there?
I don't see him on the call.
I don't see him on the call.
Okay. Uh, he was, I, I was hoping to have him, uh, able to appear by Zoom, because he knows the history of it. Uh, we did get an email from Ed's family. They are 100% behind this. Uh, it won't cost the county any monies. Uh, the artists are, uh, are donating their time, uh, and, uh, and the supplies. We don't even have to, uh, pay for the supplies. We just have to give them permission, uh, to do this. Uh, the, and it's really, it's just exciting and wonderful, and, uh, I hope that maybe we can do that, uh, in other areas as well.
Any questions?
Do you have anything to add? You were there. Do you have anything to add? You were there.
No, it looked like it was beautiful.
Alrighty now, okay, it's on. Yes, he was a very nice guy, and he was passionate about Ed and the work that he had done. It's very interesting to see that he had, this area had such an impact on him from his grandmother, that he wanted to have a place here and plans to retire back to that neighborhood. We had people that were crossing the bridge, which I must say is one of our nicer bridges. It's a beautiful bridge. And they would stop and just talk to us. And everybody was excited about the idea of having these pictures along. And it's a walkway, so it's, you wouldn't be able to see it while you're driving. It's on the inside, and the walkway is about hip height. And you could look and just see the work. So it's, it's an exciting project, and it's interesting the way they found so many artists that would be willing to donate their time to have these pictures placed there.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All right, is the presentation ready yet or no? Still need a minute or two? Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, we'll move on to infrastructure committee update. Mr. Sabatino?
Sorry, my mic is out too. We had our second-ever infrastructure committee meeting last Tuesday night here in this room. We had a pretty extensive presentation by Mr. Hall about some concerns he has with the 40-40 Airport. I will be passing them on to the administration and Ms. Barage, who's point on the airport project. We had a really great presentation by the NPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. He really put together a really nice presentation. I would recommend to the other council members who weren't at that committee meeting to just take a look at the, at the handout that was attached to the minutes for that. It really does put every, everything together very neatly and nicely for us to understand what exactly goes on, how the process of, it's a twenty-five-year plan and then a twelve-year plan and then a four-year plan, and what goes into each stage of that. And we had a brief discussion on using county properties that are in residential areas as community parks. And Chair Lombardo actually sent me a suggestion that we could do community gardens in these areas as well, which I think is a great idea. So we'll be revisiting that at the next committee meeting, which is the third Tuesday of August. We will be skipping July, because the room wasn't available. And then from August until November, it'll be the third Tuesday of, of the month at 5:00 PM. Any questions?
Anybody? I just wanted to reiterate that the presentation for the NPO by Mr. Reese was very helpful. Something that I wish, I sort of wished that I had that when I first got on council, because I had no idea what the NPO was, what it did, and how all those years were, were, were put into the plan. So even just to see that now, I, I still learned a couple of things. And I really encourage every council member to take a look at that presentation, because it really was, it was very, very extensive, and it was, it was very good. It was a great suggestion, a great idea.
Yeah, Mr. Reese definitely did a great job with it, so I encourage everybody to take a look at it. Thank you.
All right. Well, aside from the presentation, that is all we have for the agenda. So we'll just give them a second if they're almost ready. We can see it here on the Zoom on this computer. Okay. If, if that's, I mean, we, we can continue with the presentation. People on Zoom can see it. Oh, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
All right. Small miracles. Excellent. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Megan Mance.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Sorry about that. Yeah, so to piggyback off what Andy said, you know, we realize that this opioid crisis is one of the worst things to happen to our area, to this, to this county. And we are, we are, you know, committed to you to partner with you on the use of these, of these opioid funds and what we could do with them. We have studied the opioid remediation plan thoroughly and have discovered six strategies that counties are being tasked to do with these funds that we're able to help with as a media company. Those six tasks are media campaigns to prevent opioid misuse and prevention programs, corrective advertising, affirmative public education campaigns based on evidence, and this is all right from the opioid remediation plan, public education relating to drug disposal, drug take-back disposal or destruction programs, school-based youth-focused strategies that have demonstrated effectiveness in preventing drug misuse, as well as public education relating to emergency responses to overdoses, immunity, and good Samaritan laws. So our goal with this partnership is really to work with the county to fight the opioid epidemic battle and to help create a safe and, and drug-free community. So we're going to go through six ideas that we came up with to immediately address the, the strategies that are in that document, and we'll go through them one by one. The first one that we came up with is a student opioid awareness campaign. A big part of this campaign is peer-to-peer students. And again, this directly addresses the school-based, youth-focused strategies. So our idea, starting in August of 2024, when school goes back into session, we'll develop a media campaign where, where we will encourage students to submit a PSA based on, you know, peer-to-peer how to prevent, prevent drug misuse. We'll work with school administrators, principals, teachers, you know, to really promote this competition in the classroom, in the Luzerne County schools, to get, to get their involvement in it. We'll take all the PSAs through our station website, which is payhomepage.com, throughout the course of the school year. We will, once we have all those videos, we'll submit it to the opioid settlement committee for review, and that committee will pick five, five nominees. Through a course of a call-to-action campaign that we'll do, we'll select a winner, and that winner, the student and the school that they're from, will both receive a scholarship, as well as that PSA will be played in all of our high-end sporting events in 2025, including NFL, March Madness, college football. And we really feel like this addresses the school-based, youth-focused part in that plan. And we're going to show you, this is, so this student PSA campaign has been done in other states and other markets. So this is just an example of, I believe this was a finalist, right, Brian? This wasn't a winner. Yeah, this was third place, but it was student-produced. So this is just an example of the talent that exists in high schools, especially with all the new video apps that are out now. It's amazing what, what you can do, but this is pretty effective. And if we want to hear it, will I turn this off? So pretty effective, right? And, oh, now I turned that down. So again, that was, you know, student, student-produced, student-thought, and that was a finalist. So just wanted to show you an example of the kind of PSAs that we hope to get from, from doing this campaign in Luzerne County. Our second campaign that we came up with is, addresses, directly addresses the public education related to drug disposal and drug take-back disposal or destruction programs. So how this will work is, it's a working title we have, Count It, Lock It, Drop It. Starting in July of 2024, so hopefully next month and throughout the course of a year, four times throughout the year, we're going to designate one day in a certain month as a drug take-back day. And what we're going to do is, once we have those four days designated, in all of our newscasts, we're going to have reporters live at each of the nine locations or whatever locations, you know, Ryan and the team would like us to go to, but all of the Luzerne County locations where people can go and safely dispose of their drugs. I know on the website there was nine, but Ryan Hogan mentioned, you know, the pharmacies in the area can take them as well. So this is going to be similar to, I don't know if you've seen our Codes for Kids Drive that we do in the winter or our Hunger Free Summer that is happening tomorrow on Wednesdays, where we're live throughout the day in different, in different newscasts. But that's what this is going to be like. We'd like to start in July, September, January, and then end it in April. April 27th is National Drug Take-Back Day, so that was our thought to, to end it on that day. So in addition to just those four events, we're also going to create videos that will run throughout the year to give an idea of, of, you know, to keep that top-of-mind awareness of where people can, can drop off drugs and how important it is to count it, lock it, drop it safely. So that's, that's this answer to the drug take-back disposal part of the opioid remediation plan. And we have a video as, oh. Here's some key message examples that we're going to include as far as the overarching video campaign. So for parents and guardians, protect your family, count your pills, lock them up. We'll change it a little bit for seniors, stay safe with your medications. And then a general community message, you know, keep Luzerne County safe, join the Count It, Lock It, Drop It campaign. So we have a video that we wanted to show you that we thought would be a good example of what we can do. You know, running all throughout the year in newscasts, you know, high-end sports, in social media, you know, YouTube, TikTok. We can cover that all for you. So that's definitely would be an overarching annual part of keeping that top-of-mind awareness for where people can. Absolutely. So this is the third initiative that we came up with for the media campaigns and the corrective affirmative public education strategies. I'm sure everybody remembers the "It's 10 o'clock, do you know where your children are?" campaign. So we're kind of taking a modern version of that and hope to develop that kind of nostalgic with this in a positive way, that affirmative public education. We're going to run these messages for you between 8:00 and 10:00 PM, so prime time is the highest viewed hours of the day. And theme of the message will be something like, "It's 8:00, it's 9:00. Do you know who to call if you or someone you know has an opioid addiction?" Targeted to children, you know, we're going to make, keep that consistent, consistent messaging in the top two, two highest viewed hours of the day. That's why we call it prime time. And in addition, just like the campaign before, we're going to create a series of video messages that will help highlight recovery centers in Luzerne County, resources in Luzerne County, as well as some life-saving medications that are now are important, Narcan methadone. And we have an example of Narcan that we'd like to show you.
I'm a truck driver. I'm the life of the party. I'm a good listener. And I'm in recovery from substance abuse. I can say all of these things thanks to these police officers in Narcan, because every second matters.
So we thought that would be a really, something like this would be a really positive way to highlight these life-saving medications, which can be a taboo topic, I'm sure. But to put them in that positive light, affirmative advertising would be the goal, the goal for this one. Next, we have our heroes in the front line, the War Against Opioids campaign. This is, addresses the directive of public education referring to emergency responses to overdoses, immunity, and good Samaritan laws. So what we're going to do throughout the year is develop a bi-weekly news segment where we would feature an EMT, corrections officer, first responder, teacher, someone who's made a difference in the life of someone who is struggling with opioid addiction. We're going to have our evening news anchor, Candace Kelly, host this. She's the perfect person for, for it. She's married to a former state, state trooper, right? Retired state trooper, so she is the perfect face for us to do something like this. We'll do them bi-weekly, so over the course of a year, there'll be 26 of them. And then twice over the course of the year, we're going to edit all of those segments into two 30-minute specials, which will air in highly-viewed time periods on WBRE and WYU, as well as housing it online. So, yeah.
Online on YouTube.
Yeah.
Everywhere we go.
And we really thought that this was a good way to humanize these people, show their support, because what they do every day, you know, we, we can't imagine what, what goes on in their, in their day-to-day. But this was our answer to that, and really show humanity, show our support, and put them in a good light. The fifth initiative that we're doing, we actually started this month. This addresses the media campaign to prevent opioid misuse and corrective advertising. Our award-winning eyewitness news team, starting this month, we will produce three hour-long prime-time specials that kicked off this month, all focusing on substance use disorder. They're Emmy award-winning, right? We've, we've won Emmys for the ones that we've done. Absolutely. So we had one in June. We'd like to do another one in September for Recovery Month, and then another one in April. And we would certainly include the Luzerne County Drug and Alcohol Department as a sponsor of the show, and certainly include any, you know, applicable information that you guys would want involved in there. And the last initiative that we came up with, so I'm not sure if you're familiar with Paula Gignacamo. She's one of our eyewitness news reporters, and she does a segment every Thursday called Paula's Parenting Playbook, where it's all things parenting, you know, what to do, what not to do, how to be the best parent you can. So this runs Thursdays on WBRE and WYU. But for one month, what we'd like her to do is each Thursday for it all to be opioid-themed. So talking to parents about how to talk to their kids about opioid addiction, you know, what signs to look for if you think that your child might be struggling. So, you know, I have examples of topics here, prevention, intervention, treatment, recovery. But for one full month, each of her Thursday segments will be about, will be about the opioid, the opioid epidemic. And then in September, which is National Recovery Month, we're going to take all of her segments and edit the 30-minute special that will again air in highly-viewed time periods on WBRE and WYU. So that is all six of the campaigns that we came up with to directly address the parts in the remediation plan that the counties are tasked to do. So now we have, I want to show you project timeline, budget, so you can get an idea of how the, the length of, of when these campaigns will run. So all six are listed here, and as well as the media tactics used. And there's a calendar that goes 12 months. They're color-coded, so you can see our estimated timeline of when we'd like each of these campaigns to run. You can look, you know, the drug disposal goes all 12 months. The student opioid awareness campaign just goes during the school time, and so on and so forth. So this is how we have it lined up. And then for project budget, so when we took a look at all six initiatives and all the different media tactics that we're going to use, you know, traditional television, WBRE, WYU, social media, YouTube, TikTok, geofencing, you know, all, all the different media mix strategies, we came up with an annual budget. And again, this is just broken out how we thought, you know, best C-fit. But over the course of a year to nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Again, estimated breaking out per month, including, you know, some high-end sports programs that we talked about. So really a great media mix that will hit everybody in Luzerne County. So, you know, we talked to you about our strategies. We talked to you about, you know, different creative ideas. creative ideas, so now YWBRE and WYO and NextStar Media. The NextStar Advantage, so if you're not familiar with our stations, we're part of NextStar Media Group, which is the largest television group in the entire country. We have over 200 stations, over 117 markets, and cover 68% of the entire U.S. households nationwide. That all sounds great, but why is that important to you and for a media campaign? Because when you choose to partner with a media group that has the scale and size of NextStar, you have access to the power and the resources that a media group like ours has resources to. Many of those are in the digital space, which is where a big portion of these funds are going to go to, to reach the younger demographic. We are a Snapchat expert partner, a Facebook marketing partner, a Google Premier partner. Moat is something that we spend a lot of money on as a company to prevent fraudulent impressions and fraudulent advertising, which is, we have a lot of integrity with that, and not a lot of media groups buy into that. But integrity and accountability are standards here at NextStar. And when we're talking about, you know, reaching the right audience, these are some of the first-party data partners that we work with, Mastercard, Experian, Epsilon are the ones that most people are familiar with, but that's how we are able to target the right people at the right time. These are the companies that we, the partners that we use. So to sum up, you know, our commitment to this campaign is transparency, you know, working with us, we would provide you, there's a live reporting dashboard, so you are able to see how your impressions are being delivered, where they're being delivered, in real time. I would also provide to you, you know, weekly, monthly campaign analytics to have on record, so you know, especially in the digital side, that all impressions are being delivered in Luzerne County. You'll probably need that for any, you know, auditing or anything that happens. Accountability, you know, we will have quarterly meetings, you know, with you, with the opioid committee, to review everything, to tweak some things. You know, using NextStar Media Group as a company, we have, since we have over 200 stations, we have intel from over 200 stations, and some of these examples of the video that we watched were from our other NextStar stations, so we're able to see what works, what doesn't work, and really use best practices to make sure that this campaign is a success for everybody. So ultimately, our commitment to this is, like we said in the beginning, to help fight this battle, one of the worst things that's happened to this county, and really help create a safe and drug-free local community. Take any questions from anybody, but I thank you for your time and your patience.
Any questions from council members?
When I was a young kid growing up, I don't know if you can hear me, there was a show called Scared Straight. Anybody remember that? So that was on HBO, and me as a kid growing up made me not to want to visit a place that Jim Wilber runs. And that's, I'll kid in the side, it showed some nasty things, but it was real life, and it brought the point across. So I just hope, I think this is a great idea, and the money we're spending for it, I think, is going to a good cause. I just hope we show some things that aren't also great either, that people get the right idea of what we're trying to prevent, because there's lives turned upside down, families turned upside down, and some bubbly videos sometimes don't get the point across on how devastated these families become. And I think that's an important point that has to be met when you're spending money to get this point across. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Sabatino?
Thank you. I was wondering how you came up with the digital split. Do you think the money would be more effective to be used on digital media, more like the OTT and the social media, rather than commercials on, you know, linear TV?
Well, I think, you know, it doesn't discriminate opioid use, so we're really trying to include, you know, all demographics, so people that traditionally watch WBRE and WYO, but also heavy in that digital, because we know if we can, if we can reach the teens and get them before they even start, we'll eliminate that problem in the future. So that's why we thought, you know, a nice media mix of both, but also including, you know, our high-end sporting events, which cover, you know, which cover all demographics, would you say?
I'd add another thing to that, too, is the impressions on digital are typically more expensive than the impressions on broadcast. So what we want, what we like to try to do is, and we can reach, you know, we do, we don't have the targetability with our television, but we definitely over-deliver and highly-index in Luzerne County relative to the other 17 counties we serve. So that's a cost-effective way to really give you a tremendous amount of awareness. Then we take the digital layer and we go in and target much, much more narrowly to the other groups that we can't hit or don't as effectively hit on the broadcast side, if that makes sense. So that's kind of how we came to the strategy and kind of determining what's going to be the best way to invest this money to allow it to get the maximum impact. The one last thing, I'm sorry, you know, this will be reviewed, you know, especially every month on the first few months, and then at least every quarter after that. If we need to make modifications to modify how the campaign is laid out, because we're finding that certain digital tools are working better and getting a better response than others, then definitely we want to be able to do that, to respond and make sure that we get the maximum effectiveness.
Just one quick comment, despite being called old earlier today, I stream everything, so you're, we need to make sure that we hit those streamers, you know, that are in the age group that we're trying to target here, you know?
Absolutely. It's definitely included.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I agree. I haven't had, sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead.
I haven't had cable or TV in at least a decade, if not more. So streaming is really, really popular, and we really need to hit them if we want to do this correctly and effectively and efficiently. My apologies, Chair.
That's okay. Mr. Thornt, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to thank your team for being here tonight, and you gave a great presentation, and your care and passion are obvious, and that's impressive, and I'm impressed by the whole effort that you're undertaking. And I do want to add, you know, I'm one of the oldest people up here, and I remember all growing up, even into my 20s, all the commercials you would see about smoking is bad, smoking could kill you, smoking, it didn't affect any of me or my friends, it just wasn't as riveting as the commercials now. I see most of those commercials that I think were published by New York State Department of Health, where, you know, they'll show a person 55 years old, one comes to mind, they showed her in high school as a cheerleader, beautiful, beautiful young woman, now they show her, she looks 98, she's 55, she has a hole in her throat, she talks with a box, she said, "This is what smoking does to you." Now that makes a difference. See, but 30 years ago, to Mr. LaScavag's point, they used to say, "Oh, we can't put that on TV. That's too hard for young people to look at." Well, that's what they need to look at, and I hope that these kind of messages embrace that type of strategy, because that's what they need to see. But thank you all for being here, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
I think that'll happen with the heroes part of it, with the first responders going out. I think that'd be probably on the graphics side. And the peer-to-peer, I think, is essential, because all of us could go into the top of this building and scream and shout for 24 hours how bad opioids are for children or kids, and they won't listen to us, really. So I think that, I think that there's an appropriate mix of different targets, different target audiences and different means of getting the message out. I mean, I stream as well, but, you know, I also watch the Super Bowl, and I watch Sunday football, you know, and...
Gunsmoke.
And I, yeah. And I know the Yankees, those commercials are on during Yankee games that New York State has invested in, and they show the smokers. So I think this is, this is an exciting project, and one that would actually cast the net far, the message far enough, and to tell people that Luzerne County is going to combat opioids, not just on the streets, but going forward with the future.
Just to reiterate that as well, you know, as someone who's a first responder in my full-time job, I have seen how this issue transcends all social, economic, you know, racial statuses. I've been on calls where we've dealt with, you know, overdoses from young children all the way to people up in their, you know, goes into your 60s, sometimes people that are still using at that point, though, I mean, there's not a high chance of survival. So we've seen it in all types of, you know, all types of classes, and I think that this is a great, this is a great example of trying to get, you know, reach out to all of them. And just to reiterate something that Manager Croco said earlier, is that there's a reason why we're doing this and starting this off like this. I think it's a perfect segue into our approach, but we also do have to spend this money. You know, we have a time, a time period that we have to have this spent, or else we're going to have to give it back to the trust. So part of it has to be spent, I believe, by the, what is, the end of August?
Correct. We've received three payments. We have a total of $3 million, but we have to spend this little bit over $1 million by the end of August, because we received it over a year ago, and, you know, we, they want us to use the money, so time is of the essence.
And one other thing, too, is that we are also spending it on the MAT program in prison, which has been something that I think Mr. Wilber has said has been very effective, and something that is way overdue for us to be doing in there. So it's been, it's been a really effective campaign that way, and we'll continue to do that, as well as, you know, the other things that we'll do with this funding.
That was one of the first things in the opioid remediation plan, was the MAT. That was, even talking to Ryan, that was first and foremost something that, you know, he needed to get done. But then, you know, going through is where we, where we found the other, the other strategies, and so, yeah.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I just have one more question. I know that it's based on opioid avoidance, however, there are other options, like, so I was wondering if you were considering in your opioid awareness campaign, like, the test strips that test for fentanyl, things like that.
Oh, you mean... You mean discuss making, like, the, yeah, the fentanyl testing strips?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was in the one part, just talking about all the life-saving medic, not medications, the life-saving things that you have, Narcan methadone, we could certainly feature, you know, talk about those.
Because fentanyl, that's not necessarily saying, no, don't do it at all.
Right.
But it is at least working towards safety.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was just curious.
That can be worked in, for sure. Right.
Thank you.
I think that was mentioned in one of the slides with the Good Samaritan laws and whatnot as well.
Yeah, hi, my name is Brian Jenkins, I'm in LSM at the station group. Yeah, to that point, obviously, there's going to be a number of messages that we're going to incorporate. A big thing right now in the recovery business is what they refer to as harm reduction. In addition to obviously trying to get people sober, and is that we're trying to, that's where Narcan comes in, that's where the strips come in, and that's certainly going to be a big part of this campaign. Just to explain, I've been involved with radio and television for over 30 years. Prior to that, in my former life, I actually was an Addictions Counselor in the state of Pennsylvania, certified Addictions Counselor, licensed by the state. I worked at Clearbrook for 10 years, I worked at Mountain View Rebootation down in the Poconos, I work with adolescent facilities and also adult facilities. So trust me, I've seen a lot in reference to the effects this has and what happens to people. And I've seen the good and bad. I've seen people who never made it, and then I've seen people who are 40 years later, sober and clean, and have grandchildren and everything else. I'm excited about this program primarily because Luzerne County has the opportunity to really affect some change in messaging and really get the word out there and really do something with this. The kids right now are being bombarded by messages, you know, on the opposite side of this. And this is basically our ability to punch back and do something effective and really move the needle. So I think this is a great campaign. I know I'm going to be personally involved with this and have been so far. My wife still works in the business, she works at Marw, she's been in there for almost 30 years herself. So, you know, I'm very familiar with this problem and some of the things that we can do to really drive home the message. So I appreciate your time and think this is a great thing.
All right. Ms. Krzyzewski?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just hoping that maybe you guys could even take a different spin on this, like, make something, I don't know if you guys remember Fraggle Rock, when you, like, this song, like, music? Put something to music that would be something that you would remember, because I remember those things, those jingles from, and I just think if you did that, a lot of people relate to music, more so than just talking, do you know what I mean? And I think if you had something like that, even something like this, like you have this prevention thing, if you made it into a word, like trip, so you put it, you spell it out so then it'd be triggers for people to remember, and I think it's easier, especially for kids, if you were to put it into a song version, and, that's just me, but I think a lot of people remember things when you sing them as opposed to just reading them or just, you know, that's just me.
As we get into the creative, you know, and when we decide on, as we figure out how we're going to do that, we've got enough in our budget to where we can actually allocate dollars to get some jingles made. It might be more than one jingle, too. We might have one for the Count It, Lock It, Drop It, if that's the way we end up going with that. We might have one that could be different for a different thing. You're very true, it's very true that, you know, we learn our ABCs by singing them, right? And it's a thing that gets things stuck in people's head that they don't intend to, they don't intend to remember, but we remember them the rest of our lives, like, plow, plow, fizz, fizz.
Isn't there already a Schoolhouse Rock on this?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Mr. Villalobos, help, yes?
So we're, you know, anybody that's got questions after tonight, you can call me or you can call Megan or any of us here. Paul Gorley is our news director, he's been here probably, hopefully mentally noting down great story ideas that the news department can do. Stephanie Selsky is our Director of Sales, Ryan and Megan. But, you know, I believe, and I, and I'm not exactly sure, but perhaps the county manager could give us a little bit of direction on what our next steps would be as far as getting that creative, probably working with Ryan and the committee on what those would be, and then there'll be a way to funnel creative ideas that direction?
Well, council has to vote on it, and then we'll have somebody from the committee be the liaison with you. It'll probably be somebody from Human Services, Ryan, maybe somebody else.
Okay. Terrific. Go ahead, Ms. Stevenson.
Quick question. Since we're on the topic of the opioid committee, is it possible that we can potentially vote in the future to add another council member to that committee?
Well, we have the committee formed, and we're moving forward.
I mean, we can, our next committee meeting is tomorrow, we can, we can discuss it.
Right.
Yeah, we can bring it up. And I know that you had asked that question of me before, but we hadn't had the committee formed, so there wasn't really a, there really wasn't a way for me to answer it until we spoke to everybody on the committee, so we can, we'll bring that up tomorrow. Committee meeting, is that, is it 9:00?
It's a, we just sent invitations out to the committee, because we're in the formulation stage, we don't even have bylaws or anything.
Okay. And just if any of us wanted to speak about maybe having...
Right, right, we actually discussed that at the previous meeting when we first formed, is to, is to make sure that there's an opportunity for all the council members to have their opinions heard on all the matters that are going to be going before the committee. But ultimately, Manager Croco did state that anything that gets decided there has to come here for a vote and to be approved. So, you know, at any point, all of council is going to have the ability to view, review, and give their opinion on things, and if, you know, you don't like it, then we can certainly go back and, you know, and review it again in the committee and make changes.
I anticipate most of the, most of the committee work will actually be similar to maybe what Booth and Michelle Sparich and Mark Majikas do on the ARPA side. It'll be a lot of processing of programs and making sure that any, any program that receives funding follows a particular process. We don't have that process developed yet, we have to do that. So it'll, at least at this stage, it's going to be a lot of technical type of work.
I just hope that you'll consider that at the committee meeting, of putting another council person on, because there are people here who have... council person on, because there are people here who have very, very real and good experience in the community with this kind of thing, John, obviously, Chair, obviously you being one of them, but there are other people as well, so I just hope that you'll seriously consider adding another council member to the committee to be in the nucleus at the heart of the issue. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your...
Thank you, guys.
All right. If there's nothing else, is there any public comment? Go ahead, Mr. Granteed.
This is on, okay. Joe Granteed, please. I'm listening to all of what's going on here. WBRE, they're trying to make a million dollars from advertising or, or these public service announcements, and that's all good, but most of the problem with opioids is coming from the border, which they don't, they don't do any reports on, or the policies that they don't do any reports on. And I think it's a shame that, that these kids are suffering right now, because they don't get the truth from WBRE and other stations. And if you want to start helping the kids and reduce the deaths and the pain for these families, you'll start giving people the truth, so they can make decisions, the right decisions for their families.
All right, thank you, Mr. Granteed. Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Jamie, oh, I think I just, I was, Jamie Walsh, Walsh, Ross Township. I just wanted to thank Manager Crocomo for coming out. At the last council meeting, I asked about a road out in Ross Township that they were talking about putting a bike path in, and her staff quickly came out. We took a ride together, and kind of seen the issues we were talking about. I wanted to thank you and let council know that, that you were out. The other thing, as far as the, the presentation by WBRE, the one thing that I think is missing in this campaign is the families that are left over after an opioid overdose. And that's the one thing that's missing in this campaign. When my nephew found my brother from an opioid overdose two years ago, he hung himself 10 days later. And I think one of the things missing is where do people get help? You know, he found him, and because of that, he ended his life. And so although everything that you showed here is good, and I do agree with Mr. Granteed on the coverage of what's going on at the border, that's the root of the problem. The other root of the problem, another thing in your marketing campaign, is that the doctors that are over-prescribing opioids are not being held accountable, and that's a major problem. Maybe something in your marketing campaign is, if you know, if you feel your doctor's over-prescribing opioids to your, to you or your family, turn them in. We're not addressing the root of the problem. And so really, that's all I had, I had to add to that, but thank you again, Ms. Crocomo, for coming out.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody else for public comment? Ms. Hartman.
Good evening, council. I'm just wondering, was this put out for bid to local advertising agencies? Like, we have LSEO that came to council and borrowed money a couple months ago, or whatever. If they got that million dollars, they could pay the county back. So was it put out for bid?
Beth, we have, we have prior contracts with WBRE. They do a lot of our PSAs. If you, I actually saw a few the other day, which I was really impressed with. I was like, hey, they're ours, but we already have contracts with them.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.